All right. So now we are going to move on to reports. And this will be our response to the 2018-19 Grand Jury Report titled "Like Home." Who's going to be doing the presentation on this?
Mayor, I can introduce it substantively. Probably several staff will be available to answer questions, including Kristin Getz and Melinda Peterson.
Thank you very much.
So, the grand jury issued two rather lengthy and substantive reports pertaining to programs and policies of the city of Eureka, our relationship to the county, the philosophy of law enforcement, and certain of what they deem to be deficiencies in the city's housing stock and possibly the city's efforts to modify that housing stock. Director Homeland, I think one of his last acts as a city employee was to finalize his version of the response subsequent to that. It was subject to some editing by me, but not a lot, and then some supplementation by Housing Program Manager Peterson. And that's what you have before you. In the end, it's the council's response, although obviously, the only way to get this before you is the assistance of your staff. But this is your document. And so if you have changes, if you have questions, I urge you to put them on the table now. The final, I think the final date for us to respond to this is the 27th of September. The problem is, I don't believe we're going to have a meeting between now and then. And so if you do have changes, and this, by the way, all of this goes for the other report as well. If you have changes, I think you could approve this response, subject to the changes that you generally want to make, and then rely on staff to come up with the language as an approach if you want to make any modifications. Certainly, we hope it's adoptable as is, as your response. But like I said, it's your document, so any changes that you want.
All right. So let's start with any questions. I'm sure everybody has read it thoroughly and has opinions. But no questions? Oh, do we have a question, Councilman Castellano?
I think I mostly have comments.
Okay. Same with comments? All right. In that case, we'll open it up to public comment before we do our comments here. Is there anybody here to speak to this?
I've been sitting here for too long for me to sit down here away. But important for me to show your gratitude to all your city, to help out the people I serve. And during the POGA march, and city take the huge action out, and then action out, and helping the people move in the places. And today is very successful, not just to move out the people out of the POGA march, also create a job and opportunity for the people, renew their life, pay for the payday. As we've been in four years, it's very successful. We had 92% is successful in there. And right now, this is another poor women call up left. It to me is very absolutely wonderful. And help the people rebuild their self-esteem and then held them confidence. And right now, they can see what happened to them, live on the street and like now, pay up all the garbage the people leave behind. And then it's absolutely amazing. And I never forget the city provide, when we moved the people out of POGA march, provided service for dog training. My first went 10 dogs, I bet 10 dogs. In my arms still a lot of scar. And it's a souvenir. So anyway, but dog training. And right now, I have so many house, public owner provide a housing for me. The village, you provide the funding for that. Last Saturday, we have five people move out of village, four in appointment housing, and one we helped him got a job in Colorado. And right now, this tonight, we had another family move out in appointment housing. I think you guys is really helping me a lot. The police officer is really good to me. And right now, I had a couple of space in a village. Just when a cop or a sheriff department or probation office come to me say, "We have somebody to go, and can you have a spot for them?" We do. And then we open up even for the people in the SSI or disability. They can stay with us for one month. You know, one month, they save the money, and then we can help them find housing. And I think so many people, visitor come from outer Humboldt County, outer California, come to visit me, want to, sorry, copy our policy, anything, I invite them to stay with us. And yesterday, no, Monday, yeah, yesterday, I had a group from Redwood City come over here. And amazing how much city can help me out and work together. We are partner here, we work together, unity, that matter work. And thank you very much. I gotta go.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on?
Hello? My name's Brian Rus.
Just a little bit. I don't like to intimidate people, but I don't like even have to bend either.
I have, I have read the responses, and I did not have a statement prepared. One thing that did strike me, something that I read just moments before the meeting, in response to public restrooms, you know, there are restrooms along the waterfront is in the response. And, you know, four of them are open eight whole hours a day, from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. And, you know, and they are located along these, you know, along the waterfront specifically, it does mention, and then also in Sequoia Park. So unless people are in these areas, they don't have access to restroom facilities. And also, I have witnessed the vandalism that does take place at the public restrooms by the gazebo. It's completely unacceptable, it's very unfortunate, it's troubling, it's very troubling. But I don't see how closing that restroom at night is, obviously prevent anyone from getting inside and vandalizing it during those hours. But that is one, I do think that there needs to be more publicly available restrooms. We all know that businesses don't want anyone using their restroom, and that applies to citizens. I'm houseless myself, I've seen people that are apparently housed, you know. No, you're not buying anything, you're not using our restroom. And it's a problem, it affects everybody. And so just on that one little point, I didn't want to bring that up. Thank you.
Do we have any other public comment on this one? All right. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the dice for comments here. Councilman Castellano? Well, I assume you all do.
Let's see, well, thank you to everyone who commented again and for the report. Let's see, I want to begin with just saying, and I mentioned this in a smaller meeting earlier, but I wanted to mention it where other council can hear as well, is that in the future, I would love for reports such as this to have a study session included to it, so that there's more time to offer commentary as the report's being developed. This is something I think would give the potential for a deeper response on the topics. So with that being said, you know, and I do appreciate staff's attentiveness to efficiency as well. But I love to respond. So with that being said, let's see. I, on, for this report, let's see, for F8, where we're responding to the, that existing day centers are insufficient to meet the needs of the Humboldt County homeless population. I would like to add the words as well in the paragraph where we say, however, the city of Eureka strongly encourages the county to cite such centers in other Humboldt County communities as well as in Eureka. And then, and to avoid the thinking that all solutions to homelessness must be located in Eureka. Just, I feel like it's important that we also acknowledge that we need sites, both in Eureka and in other places, because we do have people who need access to day use centers in Eureka. Let's see, and then for R7? Yes. This was the one about, just to summarize, about safe parking programs. And, let's see, my greatest concern specifically, well, first, I want to say that I do feel like Eureka is making some great movement on housing. I mean, just since I've been on council, there's a lot of projects that are coming forward, there's been changes in code that will help things progress, I think, much more quickly than they were in the past. But I do think we still need to be mindful of ways that meet transitional needs, and particularly that are low to zero barrier solutions. You know, I talked today to a number of different service providers in the community who are really pleased with the work that Eureka is doing. But, you know, I still think that we have to do something that addresses these low to zero barrier transitional needs until we have, you know, housing for everyone that has the support systems necessary and in place. So, that being said, I feel like for R7, it would be great to, whether or not it's a parking area, to at the very least investigate more short-term transitional solutions that we could bring to the table. Let's see, and then, and perhaps in this section, I think it would be useful to mention the need of partnership with the county for case management, mental health support for people who are placed in housing, so that that housing can be successful. I think that's all I have for this one.
All right. Councilman Alaya?
So overall, I appreciated the staff's thoroughness of the response. I agree that, I think R7 saying this recommendation will not be implemented. I would like to see, and this is talking about the supervised safe parking programs. I would remain interested and open to partners in the community. And I've brought up in the past, perhaps faith-based institutions. I knew in other cities, churches host a rotating, you know, supervised safe parking program where the impact is basically reduced through rotating to different sites, so that it's not consistently in one neighborhood. That sort of helped reduce the concerns around that to some degree, and have utilization of church facilities for restrooms and showers, which is a big request, but often in the wheelhouse of some faith-based organizations. So perhaps that's something that could be realized in our community if we had willing partners. So I'm not opposed to seeing that. I think that the city of Eureka would supervise that is not feasible at this time. But I don't want to rule out working with partners on a safe parking program. I didn't, perhaps I missed it, but in this response, I didn't see anything about the transitional, like trailer site project, which is in development. Perhaps I just missed it. But that is the somewhere where we are continuing to focus energy, but there's some obstacles. So that's continuing to move forward, is my understanding. Could staff elaborate on that?
We are trying to keep that project moving forward, but as you indicated, we have run into obstacles, so I think that's why we didn't include it. But yet, we are still trying to pursue that project.
Okay. But just so the public knows, we are continuing to work on that. There's some, maybe we can have more information and update about that once we have more information to share. And then, you know, I do agree that we all need to find ways to collaborate, and a joint meeting might be in order to talk about this issue again. It's been years since we had a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors about housing. When we, and I thought that was really fruitful, actually, to be able to be in the same room and discussing it. And I think because of Brown Act limitations, in some ways, we haven't been able to, you know, our conversations are happening in silos, and because of some of the privacy concerns around client confidentiality within DHHS and situations like that, you know, a lot of times, information can't be shared as readily as we might like. And we need to be having these conversations publicly, so for recommendations around collaborating more between city and county leaders, I would love to see that happen. So even though the leadership, the homeless leadership work group continues to meet, I'd love to see a joint city-county meeting again. And so perhaps if others agree, we could include that as a goal. But otherwise, I didn't have any other, oh, my understanding is around the day use center topic, F8. So I don't know what qualifies as a day use center. Pardon my ignorance, but I know that St. Vincent de Paul's Dining Facility. I don't know what the hours are currently, or what the day use potential there is. But my understanding was, before this, was that we had three day use centers in Eureka currently. So I guess I have an outstanding question about whether we have two or three for staff. And I see that the individual from St. Vincent de Paul is here, so I don't know if that would be okay with you, Madam Mayor?
Sure. We will get the information from the people who have it.
It's not enumerated in this report, by the way. I'm just wondering for my own edification, how you consider your facility.
Leslie was kind enough to forward me the report earlier this evening. We typically have hours of 8:00 to 4:30 roughly, where there's operations going on. The lunch service is from 11:00 to 12:30. Open Door Medical comes usually right now about three days a week with their mobile medical unit. So they fluctuate between morning and afternoon hours, those three days. And then, of course, St. Joseph Hospital's Community Resource Center is there. Brian's usually there at least four days a week, and roughly, I'd say nine to four type hours. And then Betty has her showers going Monday, Wednesday, Friday, from roughly 8:00 to 12:00. And our staff may be there beyond 4:30 certain days. And the clientele that are kind of regular, they might be hanging out and want to use the restroom, or just come in if it's like, all of a sudden, a storm comes up, and we'll accommodate them. But those are kind of like the regular clientele that we have a knowledge of and a history of and all that, and a rapport with. And then, of course, I know Brian has three meal services at the mission. And I'm not sure when he, I think they get the people out after the dinner service that aren't going to be residing overnight. And Betty, I'm still learning about her operations.
So I, at least all of those have been billed one time or another as a day use center, whether there are restrictions. I know that there are different restrictions and different available hours and services available. But, thank you, that helps to clarify the services that you currently offer. And, you know, I do know that when we approached a day use center on Wabash in collaboration with a church, frankly, the response to that was so incredibly, is that we said brutal? I agree with you, that word would be brutal. I was fearful of people's safety after some of the responses I heard. So that, and I know that the, you know, the church was not, was not willing to proceed with that. And there have been other proposals to locate services in locations where the response has been. So not just opposed, but terrifying to me. And I've been worried about the safety of the people using the space, as well as our own safety. So I think it's something to be conscious of, that is it really reflected in this report? And it's hard to capture the anger that proposing additional temporary services for individuals and transitional services can sometimes evoke. And it's something that, frankly, I'm not sure how to, you know, how to approach besides steady conversation and taking things one or two projects at a time, which is what we're doing now. And so I think, one thing that was really hard about reading this report, and if you would like to sit down, you can, but I'm not telling you. Because I'm kind of going into my other comments. But one thing that was really disheartening about reading this report was that, you know, I think there are, there are a lot of projects in the works that are making visible and obvious progress, and hopefully will be positively impactful. And the scale of the issues we have around poverty and around lack of access to housing is so big that it can make people really just, including myself, feel like giving up. So it was frustrating to see that that wasn't acknowledged to the degree that I thought was, that work that is in progress and the steps that are being made, I don't think was acknowledged to the degree that is reasonable for a city of our size, and for the enormous amount of political will that it has taken to get the projects that we do have in the hopper going. So that's just, those are my feelings about this. It has been, it has been an enormous emotional and psychological hurdle to get to where we are right now. And so that's something that can't be reflected in this report. But I wish there was a way to factor in the fears of safety and the lost leap, and the, you know, just the, how draining it is to move even the projects that we do have forward. So I just wanted to share my feelings on that with all of you. That said, those are my comments about the report. I would like to, I don't necessarily need to clarify anything about day use centers, but I would like to include a goal of having a joint meeting with the county and the city, and considering a language around R7 that says that the recommendation isn't going to be implemented at this time by the city of Eureka, but that other partners are, would be, remain open to other partners who would be interested in operating such a facility.
Do I just ask for consensus on these changes? I mean, I'll give you consensus right now. Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with that. We didn't with Leslie's either, but did anybody have any problem with anything Leslie added? Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're all.
Do we feel like there's clarity around what those are for staff, to make those changes?
Did you write them down?
I'm taking notes, but I'll probably also go back to the video.
That sounds fun for you.
I just, I figured it'd probably be smarter to just do it as we're making the comments. I wanted to say, just based on what you were saying, I'm relatively new to this, so I didn't have to go through some of the trauma. I watched it, I watched it from afar. And since I have been in office, I look for paths and ways to, opportunities to move forward. And what I've come to determine is, is it often looks like there's this clear-cut path to solving a problem. And I found that there are these monstrously huge boulders on those paths that you don't know, that you can't move. And that could be NIMBYism, and it could be lack of resources, and it could be the clients that you can help in one situation, and you can't help in another. And so I think what we end up doing a lot is, we're looking for cracks in between the boulders to get through. So we help a few people that way, we chip away a few things. And that does mean maybe a dozen people every couple of weeks at the pathway, or a couple of months for Path Day, Pathway, Payday, Pathways to Payday. Sorry, I have so much trouble saying that. Maybe it does mean, so it's a few things there. It's the uplift program where we're helping some folks. And then you, every once in a while, you chisel away a big chunk, and you get the Veterans Housing Project. But there are always just these huge obstacles that keep us from being able to really barrel down a path that looks and sounds like it should be really easy, but it's just always full of stuff. And I kind of got that from what you were saying as well. Nothing is as easy as we think it's going to be. You think that there's a path, and it's just not there as easily. But we do pick small projects and consistently move forward all the time with something. Everybody's always working on doing what they can to move people ahead.
Councilmember Bigella?
I'm sure you have lots to say, too.
Actually, I don't.
Really?
No. I have a little bit to say.
Nice.
So I'll just be frank, I was very disappointed when I read the report.
Do you mean the Grand Jury Report or our report?
The Grand Jury Report, on many levels. I was actually interviewed for the report. I'm not supposed to say that. We're going to redact that from our video. I'm sorry, I didn't know that, anyway. Can we redact that? It's top secret. Anyway, whatever.
I think it's already out there, but I think it's harmless, so.
So now I just put my notes somewhere else. Shoot. I got all, you threw me off with that little comment there, Natalie.
Is that my heartfelt apologies?
Yes. But now I can't find my notes. That's crazy. Oh, that's a real bummer. I don't know what I just did with them. Well, I'm just going to go off the cuff then. Actually, I did find a couple that I have here. So I just wanted to bring up a few things. One of the things I want to bring up is that, you know, a lot changed. And some people in the audience would say it's a negative, and some people would say it's a positive. But I would say a lot changed when the vacation of the marsh happened. And a lot changed governmentally, I believe, at that time. At that time, there wasn't, you know, there was a whole area in our city that was being environmentally, there was a lot of environmental problems. There were people being, living in not-so-good conditions. They had a community, and it was a beautiful community, and there was a lot of love there. But there was also a lot of violence, there was a lot of sickness. There was a lot going on there that wasn't healthy as well. And what I would like to say is that when the city decided to vacate the marsh and picked a date, the collaboration that came together with all the different entities in our city is the kind of collaboration we need to continue to move forward with this situation. You know, I don't, it's a problem, but I want to make sure that we're clear that it's not, people aren't the problem. People are trying to live. We're just trying to figure out ways to help them, to support them into ways of living that may be more beneficial if they want. When the marsh was vacated, there was an extensive, extensive exhaustive search, actually, for city property. Where can we put people? Where can we do these things? I remember AHA was looking to find a place. We looked at private property down under the bridge, which now is going to be a trailer park. That was private property, and so it was expensive. In the city of Eureka, we're pretty built out. There's not a lot of places for us to put people. And frankly, I'll just say it, I think that tent camps, camps, I believe camps are a slippery slope. They just really kind of, they freak me out a little bit. I've, you know, watched history a little bit, and I don't know. Putting particular groups of people in one specific space, corralling them, to me, is not the solution either. So during this time, when we were doing this exhaustive search, we did go to several churches and talk to them about hosting car camps. Absolutely not. They were not willing at that time. And maybe now it's time to ask. And maybe now it's time to ask a better question. Maybe now people would be more willing. Things have changed. I don't know. Um, but the reason that I felt also disappointed was that, you know, currently since that time, we've made a lot of mistakes, but we've moved forward in a lot of different directions. And I think that, you know, looking at housing, looking at the ADUs, looking at, um, ways to support people into housing and get them the supportive services that they need, um, those kinds of things. I think that, um, you know, the whole idea with the, with the lodge, with providing a particular portion of each new facility that goes up to house people that, that aren't housed right now. I think that that's been a great implementation. Working with partners, working with partners like the vets and the, um, and Betty and different people to find other opportunities to get them housed. The city doesn't have the funding, the staffing or any of that. I think a lot of the people that work on getting people housed in the city portion, it's a lot of volunteer work and it's a lot of, we care. Now that's changed since we've got uplift. Uplift certainly has been a great gift. It's given people an opportunity to step up to, um, you know, I heard it said, self-esteem comes from doing esteemable acts. And it, it provides an opportunity for people to grow together and to build relationships and build the community. And again, I don't want to negate that that community was there in the past. I just want to say that in, that we are moving forward to create new community with similar people. And I wanted to also speak to the day center situation. You know, currently you can go to Betty's till two. You can go to St. Vinnie, we heard that. You can go hang out at Brian's, but you really can't go hang out there. You can't go hang out there with your dog. You can't go out there, hang out there with your property. Maybe you can for a little while at the mission, but not if you've got a lot of stuff. So these are things that we need to address. And unfortunately, um, I would just, it's so upsetting. But unfortunately, when we try to do that, when we try to move forward, there is so much cruelty and community opposition that it's very challenging. We don't have a lot of places for people to be. And so when something comes available and the whole community turns into, I don't know, Lord of the Flies, I mean, it's just like these, you know, just mean, mean, mean. It was horrible, that particular meeting. Um, and there've been more like that, that continue to happen. Respectful communication is gonna be the key to moving us forward in any direction. And that's gonna be a practice. It's not gonna be an easy thing, but we've seen it. We've seen it with the collaboration that we used at Vacation of the Marsh. We've seen people from the marsh heal. We know that people can heal and get better and move forward. It's a matter of, and the mayor said it herself, it's a matter of, you got this rock and it's not the first blow that breaks it. It's not. You just have to keep hitting the rock, chipping away, chipping away. You don't know if it's the hundredth blow that's gonna break it or if it's gonna be the fiftieth. And that's why it's so important for us to stay open minded about different things that may be available. Um, you know, the whole car camping thing, I don't think that's the greatest idea. However, if a community partner was willing to provide the property, provide the, um, oversight and all of that, it could be a consideration. Um, there are so many things that we could be doing with our partners. And I feel like that as we move forward, there's like two steps forward, four steps back. And a lot of that is fear, because of course people fear what they don't understand. And, um, we're talking about human beings here, human beings. So, um, yeah, I just, I was really disappointed by this report. I felt like it really didn't take into consideration all of the efforts that the city is making. There's a lot more efforts to be had and to be done. And we work on them all the time. And maybe they're not out in the public. And again, that comes back to what I was talking about earlier is that, you know, people get upset because they don't have all the information. And sometimes we can't give all the information and it's frustrating. So I support this letter as written with the changes. I think that, um, it'll be really important to have a board of supervisors meeting. I think that was very fruitful because there was a lot of information at that meeting that there were supervisors that weren't, weren't even aware of things that were happening in the city and probably vice versa. And so to be able to have that community meeting and to look at, okay, well, this is what we've done. This is what we've done. How can we collaborate and make this into something bigger and better? Um, so I support that strongly. Um, and I think that I've said it many times, but I think that collaboration is gonna be key and that, um, respectful conversation is much easier to swallow than being yelled or screamed at. So, uh, I don't think anybody likes that. So, um, I'm looking forward to what the city has in store for this situation moving forward. That wasn't a lot, what?
Councilmember Castellano.
I have another, just short comment and, and it's not, it's, it's a little broader. Um, but it's something that, um, I think has kind of come out, come up a little bit throughout the meeting and various public comments, um, particularly earlier. But I just wanna say that, um, like the homeless, you know, i- is not like one group. And there's a lot of difference and diversity, um, amongst a large population of people who, you know, certainly they don't have homes, but there, there's a lot of difference. And, um, I think it, it can become commonplace to refer to something you don't like or something we don't like as, as being caused by the homeless or, and, and, um, just wanna remind people that, you know, the, the path, of, often the, the things that have created, um, the life situations that, that cause someone to be without a house are difficult and complex. And that, um, there are many hurdles that people face, um, as they're, you know, struggling, um, to find place. And, um, just that, I, I, I do want to invite the, the public to be mindful of, um, making assumptions about a very broad and dynamic group of people. And, and we do talk about, um, people who are without houses.
All right. I believe that is, um, our report now. Do we, somebody want to make a motion to accept this to, with corrections?
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Three yes votes, councilmember Messner and Allison absent, motion carries.
All right. So we will move on to the next, um, city council response to the report titled Le Mesar. And we don't need the introduction again because it's the same as last time as a-
I think there's nothing different.
Okay.
Except to identify Chief Watson. And, um, Miles, uh, the, both of them have contributed, uh, in a big way to the report, starting with the very first draft by Chief Watson, which was, uh, very timely and very extensive. Um, and most of that, almost all of it, made it into the final, uh, draft response. But the, uh, community services did, uh, chime in with some very important information about, um, some of the programs that were engaged in. So they're here if you have questions for them.
So do we have questions on this, this report? Councilmember Bigel.
Well, I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I would love for, um, Director Slattery or Director Millar to come forward and talk a little bit about the programs, because I think that the public doesn't know some of the programs that we have going on. And I don't know if this is appropriate now or if it's something that we can get in the city manager, manager's report later. But certainly, um, things like uplift and things like, um, the Cape program, things that are working in our city, um, I don't think that the public really is familiar. So I know we are to a degree, but-
Yeah, that's giving me some thinking. That's my-
I think we could probably provide a more comprehensive report at a following council meeting with, you know, with appropriate, um, overheads and so on.
I'm almost wondering if we could do, um, more of a town hall type of style with the reports of the things that have been happening, where people could have some conversation. We could just plan another, another special session of a meeting. Look at, here comes Director Slattery. He's like, I'mma just tell you now.
Thank you, Director.
Meeting this week, but, um, next council meeting was our intention to come back with an, uh, update about uplift and the Cape program and the different programs that we're providing. If council would like to do that in a special study session, we could do that too. But the plan was to do either as a part of the city manager's report or a part of the mayor's report to talk about uplift.
Request that you do a report and, um, bring in somebody that, that's a part of the program so we can hear from people who are receiving the services as well? If you have a representative or-
We have a full production that'll be coming to you. It won't include, imagine all the people like our budget one, but it'll, it, we have, uh, interviews with participants, we have interviews with people that have been through the program, we have interviews with all the partners that we're working with. Um, so it'll be extensive.
Great. I think I could speak for all of us and I see we're very much looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions? All right. Do we have any comments from the audience on this, on this report?
I stepped out for a moment on the last one, so, um, because I referred to the other one, I might refer to the other one in this. Um, basically I, I wrote this more because it needed to be written and it needed to be said. I didn't expect you to change anything or, but, um, I think it's really important that, while we acknowledge that, uh, people are moving forward and there's all these, um, we have to remember that there's still a lot out there to do. And as we just nibble, nibble away, and that was what I was really, I was disappointed in the, um, grand jury's report because they just accepted that, um, okay, there's this problem, this problem, this problem, this problem, this problem. And so if we problem, this problem, this problem, this problem, um, that will solve it. But it doesn't because everybody has one problem and that is that they don't have a place to live. And that, I think, is the foundational issue that needs to be dealt with. And I applaud the city, um, the housing element, except for the homeless thing that isn't there. Um, the, the, you know, the moving forward with housing and the, 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 as you said, inclusion within projects, not building big projects for poor people. Um, a- all that is, is really wonderful, but, um, right now stemming from an action report five years ago, you still have the police managing your homeless. And that is the reality of it. And I'm not sure that that is really housing first. I'm not sure that that's even really what you want. Um, so I just, um, I think there's a place for a camp. I don't, I resent, I have a real problem with people talking about corralling people. And other things that are said, things that are said around homeless, I just try to ignore. But I do sometimes have to say it, is, you know, don't talk to me about corralling people, um, into a place, because that's not what I'm talking about. Again, housing first is not just about housing, it is about the people. It is literally about the people, about listening to what they need and they want and helping them do that. And the, but what it does, the housing part comes into is that they need a stable place from which to do that. Um, so I will leave it at that. Thank you. It's like a door opening. Okay, um, I'm Nezzy Wade and I wanted to say one thing real quick. Other centers that we have, in all fairness to them, one is the Hope Center, which is part of the mental health complex that we have for the county. And that is a day center. People can go there. They have mental health action plans for healing and they have a lot of other things that they can do there. There's also our adult day health services and there's the senior resource center. There are places that people can go. Uh, we have a great community and we have a lot of things that are going on in places that people can go. With respect to, uh, our folks who are living on the street, a lot of them aren't comfortable in going many places, uh, for a lot of reasons. Um, uh, I can sort of echo the last speaker in terms of how we talk about a really diverse and wonderful and rich population. And, um, I know this is more about the last report than this report, but with respect to safe parking, since it's been part of the topic here. Uh, the last report mentioned that it was of limited value. And I'd like to challenge that it's not of limited value. In places where they have it, it's working well. And dispersed, dispersed sites work very well under the, um, umbrella of a nonprofit or a willing partner. And that wouldn't be, no one would be asking the city to do that necessarily, but I would like you to consider that that can be very helpful. With respect to R one and R three and your, um, commentary about implementing no committee of the various players and that advocates and the homeless folks would not be appropriate for reviewing ordinances. But you might be willing to have quarterly meetings and that sort of thing. I'd like you to, encourage you to consider, uh, working with AHA and other organizations who already hold community conversations and have meetings with people that are informing about their experiences of being houseless and living on the street and in various places. It, it could be very helpful, uh, because I think it's really important that, from the point of view of someone who's being affected by whatever circumstances we create, it's awfully important to have their input on how they're impacted by it. So, um, in terms of participating, do participate. I think that's a, a great thing. And I lo- I loved what you said in the letter about collaborations, uh, because it has to happen. And you want to take the responsibility off of the shoulders of EPD. Well, then you need more collaborations for people that are doing things that are working with that population. So I would encourage you to do that and to build greater bridges by, um, participating with us and other nonprofits that are interested in working with and creating alternatives that are affordable for the folks that we know and love and care for. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? All right. Seeing none, I will bring it back to the dais for comments. Councilmember Arroyo.
Great. Um, I just had comments about, I mean, this is a very rich report full of data. So thank you to our staff who compiled all of this. Um, it is not data that I had entirely at the ready. So, um, I will save it and refer to it, um, in the near future, um, pretty often. And found, I found it really beneficial and how, and it does highlight a lot of those programs. I'm not sure how many people will read the entirety of our report, but, uh, it does certainly talk about our uplift and CSET programs and other community programs, um, that, um, that have a lot of value and, um, are aimed at supporting people in a collaborative way rather than criminalizing behavior. So, um, I just wanted to note that, you know, these are really more comments than changes. Um, on F three, that the, I hear this comment a lot, that the financial cost of criminalizing homelessness far exceeds the cost of providing services to transition people into housing. And, um, I, people refer to the state of Utah a lot. And I would just remind folks that we're not the state of Utah. We don't, we're not a state. We are a small community of 27,000 people, um, and we are strapped for budget to do basic things. Um, and so to think that there is a pool of resources out there that we are just wantonly spending, um, criminalizing homelessness, I think is, is a misconception. Um, and, um, and it's frustrating because we don't have access to the largest amount of resources, pot of resources relating to services, um, and resources for services. So that's, um, a continued challenge. I realize that so many of the recommendations are about working collaboratively with the county, who is the recipient for a lot of those resources. But, um, given that we've created a lot of programs to work outside of what is, um, you know, currently the responsibility and kind of, um, uh, the current bounds of the city. And we've been really stretching that, um, with so many of our departments working beyond what they were initially tasked to do, to try to creatively come up with solutions. It's frustrating to kind of have this, um, this same, um, approach of, oh, if only you would just pour all that money into providing, you know, housing and a stable living situation. Well, we're doing the best we can. And, uh, and, uh, I will tell you, there is, there is not just this secret backlog of money that we're holding back on.
And it's not just money.
And it's not just money.
It's not just money. It's all those boulders. It's the, it's the NIMBYism and it's the fact that different people- It's the NIMBYism, and it's the fact that different people can go to different things. It's complicated.
So complicated. So anyway, I just wanted to note that I think that that's not necessarily, I mean, sure, in theory, I agree with that statement, and it doesn't really translate to what we're really working with in Eureka when it comes to the available resources. And I do believe fundamentally that it's our responsibility to provide services to all our residents and that EPD is responsible to respond to calls for service when people feel unsafe. And that might be very different from what makes me feel unsafe, and we need to have, you know, our ordinances and the rule of law upheld. And so that, finding that balance is critically important, and I just want to acknowledge that I think EPD does a phenomenal job of really doing their best to work with individuals and to respond to people's calls for service, which is really critically important. My only other comment on this, I mean, other than it's an incredible amount of data just around the recommendation of public restrooms and porta potties, I certainly think it would be beneficial to have more public restrooms. I know that they are very expensive and challenging to maintain. I know that people really held up this example of the Arcata public restroom that they have off the plaza that's very lovely and usually very clean and nice to use. And I was talking to City of Arcata staff about how much they hate that thing. Well, maybe they wouldn't say they hate it. It's just very difficult to maintain and expensive and at a constant source of frustration. So recognizing that that has not been a silver bullet for them either, the Portland Lou style toilet, and that our staff put so much time and energy into renovating the public restroom in Old Town to use crime prevention through environmental design principles. And ultimately, that it ended up being still too difficult to keep open 24/7 and had to be, that had to be modified. But we also did, I just want to recognize that we did for a short period of time collaborate with the Harbor District to get some porta potties in the marsh areas that were immediately set on fire and destroyed. So not to say that we couldn't revisit that concept. Okay, well, my understanding was that, okay, there was one that was set on fire and destroyed. So within like the first couple of days. So I don't think that that, that was what I was told by staff, and I just asked that, this is a back and forth right now. My understanding is that that was not successful. We could certainly revisit that if we had willing, again, willing partners that were interested in helping monitor that, so it's not just an unmonitored situation where then we are held responsible for the costs associated with that. So again, that's something that I'd be happy to revisit, and if, if there are folks who would like to help us develop some more public restrooms over time, perhaps the chamber or visitors' service, you know, locations that, you know, I know that there are ways that that can be managed well, but some of the efforts we've tried in the past have not been successful. So it doesn't seem like those are all reflected here.
Thank you. Councilmember Castellano.
Let's see. Yeah, again, this is a very thorough report, and I spent most of today talking to different people in the community and not that that was like an exhaustive search, but, you know, about their experiences working with the city of Eureka. And I do want to say that by far, people feel like there has been tremendous growth and improvement and positive changes. That being said, of course, you know, there's always work to do and always learning to do. Let's see. I would like to, in terms of the public bathrooms, you know, the successful programs I've seen include 24-hour management, which for sure is something that the city itself cannot afford, but I would like, some mention that we would welcome partnerships for management and funding of that kind of management. You know, for, for example, I saw a great example, project that's happening in San Francisco where there's people who are working with probation, I think, you know, basically people who've experienced incarceration and then are getting jobs managing restrooms, and it's actually providing some great services for people. And not to say we need to replicate that project, but that there are, you know, maybe some possibilities for, for community partnership there for funding something like that. Let's see. This is, I feel like it's somewhat indicated in this report, but particularly related to R4, where we're looking at Eureka Municipal Code ordinances. I think it would be great for the city attorney, or I'd appreciate the city attorney to spend some time looking, and I think this is kind of on the radar already, but spend some time looking at ordinances that are not in alignment with current practices. And, you know, if we have laws that need to be changed, we should change them or repeal them or do what's necessary to be in alignment with current practices. You know, and I know that is a slow and careful process, but I think that that, some mention of that could be included in this report. I also think that something that came up a lot in conversation today and that I think about a lot is just the mention of the ongoing struggles with meth and opiate addiction and that the need for larger county, state, potentially federal funding around these issues to really address the broad scale and scope of challenges associated with that addiction and how it plays out in communities. So I would love to see, I'm not sure exactly where in here, but I feel like it would apply somewhere to this response as well.
Does he may have any comments about that?
Mayor, could I, could I ask for a little clarification on Councilwoman Castellano's last point?
Please do.
How would you like that to be spoken to in the response?
Let's see. I think, let me get to R4. So many pages. Okay. All right. Let's see. You know, I, I made the note on page, but I don't know if it's the right place, but on page one, our document, page 114, where there's talk about the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And again, I'm not sure if that's the right place. You know, there's a rather detailed response there, but basically just something about the city attorney will analyze and report to council about ordinances, about, related to current practices around municipal ordinances.
Well, there is mention already of the fact that we're, because of litigation that we're involved in, Leatherman and Cobine, we're taking a hard look at at least two of those ordinances. And I'll, I'll just guarantee you that they're going to change.
Sure.
And then there are others that are, in a way, kind of no brainers and don't seem to deserve a look for that reason. You know, if you, unless you have just a kind of a radical policy change, but things like open containers, open use of narcotics in public, public nudity, you know, things like that, seem like, they're not, they're not very often written up that way, but it does seem like we probably want to have a law on the books that can address certain behaviors. But actually, that was not the one I was asking about because you were, you were talking about the problems created by the certain drug addictions, meth and other. And I wasn't sure, I what, if you, I didn't know if you wanted the report to be changed to somehow acknowledge that in a more clearer way, or if that was just kind of a comment that this is one of the challenges that we face, which I think we understand.
Yeah. You know, that was, it was a, that was one of those where like after reading the report, I just felt like there should be mention of that somewhere, but I wasn't sure where in the report, but it feels like it's a compounding factor.
No, definitely. Okay. So we'll try to find a place in there to mention that as a policy consideration that we're kind of constantly dealing with, so.
So at this point, for point of order, I'd like to extend the meeting till 10 o'clock? So I'd like to ask, yeah, I would like to ask somebody.
I'll move that we extend the meeting till 10:00 P.M.
All second. All righty. All in favor. I just need one more vote.
I voted.
It's not showing up. Sorry. There it is. Sorry. I'm sorry. It shows different here than it does up there. Three yes votes. Councilmember Messner and Allison, absent motion carries. Chief Watson, did you want to contribute to that last statement? I saw you move up here.
That was just to extend the meeting.
Just wanted to get the procedural stuff out of the way.
To address.
Thanks. Yeah, and I did highlight that and put yes.
We could actually mention the fact that the city of Eureka is one of the plaintiffs in the opioid, the big opioid litigation back in Cleveland. And, you know, that we, we certainly recognize that as a foundational problem that is causational to homelessness and maybe even symptomatic of homelessness, so.
I think it makes sense to include that, not, and recognizing that not all homeless individuals have opioid use disorder or use any opioids, but I think that makes sense to include, that that is one avenue. And perhaps even, you know, if, if you're at liberty to include some of the possible uses, should we be successful in that litigation, that may be good to include. I just don't know at what point we can include anything about that.
Yeah. I do think, I do think it's significant that the city of Eureka was proactive in getting involved in that, in that litigation.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bial?
So just one point of clarification, then I'll talk about my comments. But it is true that the bathrooms at the marsh were burned within like three days, but there is no proof that it was a homeless person, and there was a lot of antagonistic things happening at that time, and I think that also needs to be taken into consideration. We don't have any idea who did it. There were rocks being, there was a lot of crazy stuff from the public happening to the homeless population down there. So that needs, we need to keep that in mind when we're talking about these things. So in response to this, I just, I find it interesting that one of the, in F1, they say citation and arrest have never been a strategy of this city of Eureka. Oh, no, that's, yeah. And that is true, but in the grand jury report, that was the first thing that they said, was law enforcement is not a strategy to reduce homelessness. And we have been saying that and trying to work away from that for quite a long time since Andy Mills was here. And I think that that's really important. It's not, unfortunately, unfortunately, it's not an overnight matter, and it's a balance that needs to be struck. And one of those balances was back, a while back, a while, while back, that people were allowed to sleep from nine to six. People are not, unless they're behaving irrationally or doing something, you know, about, below the, against the law, people are allowed to sleep from nine to six, nine P.M. to six A.M. without the police coming to bother them. And I think that's really important. Just a couple of other things. You know, when it talks about law enforcement not being the go-to, what I would say, and my personal belief about this, is that, that I appreciate is with a lot of these different community partners that we have in project and like community services, the police department, the fire department, these people that have been working tirelessly, is that Eureka had, has a problem, and I appreciate that people are willing to step outside their regular job or their regular in-the-box solutions that they've always done and look for different avenues to reduce the symptoms of the problem and to support people into different ways of living by asking the question, by giving people the dignity and respect to make their own choices. I really, that is something that I really appreciate. And there's a balance with that. I think, you know, and it says here in our, I really appreciated this in the findings, is that, yes, we need to be compassionate, but yes, we live in a society, and it's a conundrum, and it's a, it's a, it's circular. Because I could sit here and I could say, well, you know, no one has a fundamental right to litter and no one has a fundamental, you know, to destroy public property and all of those things. And then I could sit over here on this other side and I could say, yeah, but where are they supposed to put their trash? What are we going to do about that? I mean, it's just like this circular kind of thing. And eventually, I'm hopeful that we can get to a place where we can, you know, put something in the wheel and stop it for a moment and actually move in a better direction in that regard, because it is true, we all, as community members, have a responsibility to each other not to litter and not to, you know, trespass on people's properties and all those things that are listed in here, not to run out in front of cars or those kinds of things. You know, we all have to follow traffic laws, those kinds of things. So I think it's, it's a balance, and it's a tough balance sometimes. And I just, you know, I really, when reading the findings, I was, again, disappointed that they hadn't looked at any of the, of the things the city was doing. I think they included the MIST program, but they didn't include all of the hard work that CSAT is doing. The SEPDED team, they didn't include that. They didn't include Uplift. There are so many areas in our city that we are working to improve people's quality of life, and so that was, that was a very, I didn't see that in the grand jury report. So I'm happy with the way this is written. I think it really speaks, it's very rich in fact of what we are doing, and I really appreciate all the hard work that went into this. And I think that's all I'm going to say for right now.
Councilmember Arroyo?
I just have one more clarifying comment. That I, I was not trying to say that any one specific person or group destroyed the bathroom, but I, I pushed really hard for that darn porta potty, and it was really disappointing. And I remember we were pushing hard for that, and we had this Harbor District and City Two by Two Committee where that was a big priority, and they were willing to pitch in, a partner was willing to pitch in, and we pitched in. And it was a small thing, but it really destroyed some faith in the idea that we could have these things and, and try doing them and that they would be taken care of. And I know that we cannot blame unhoused people for that. And the same was true for little tiny grants I wrote to do environmental education on the waterfront, and, okay, the porta potty was there for one day, you know, and it got destroyed before the kids could even use it for these environmental education events. So recognizing that if we're going to do bathroom things, they have to be super well-supervised and incredibly well-designed, and there have to be people there all the time, and that that's super resource-intensive. So if people want to help us realize bathrooms, please, please do. I'm receptive. I just know that there needs to be a lot of monitoring, and I, our staff know that, and they tried to warn me, and I was like, no, we can do it. We can do this porta potty thing. Come on. And Miles is just laughing back there in the back of the room, like, I told you so. So anyway, that's something that I just want to say, I remain open to, given the sort of partnership opportunities.
That does all the comments. Is somebody ready to make a motion?
I approve, or I recommend, we approve the city's response to the County of Humboldt Civil Grand Jury Report titled Less Miserebals, dated July 8, 2019. Director Mayor to sign and staff to submit response to presiding judge of the Humboldt County Superior Court.
All second. All in favor? Three yes. Councilmember Messner and Allison, absent motion carries. Thank you very much. That was a long but important discussion, I think. So thank you, guys. Our last, well, it's not our last, but we do have the city manager report.